It's five thirty P M and we're going to call our regular meeting workshop of the board to order. This evening in our workshop, we had the opportunity of dialogue as a board with the reports from the council. And Superintendent Banner, your your group for the most part is virtual tonight. We appreciate that. So I am going to acknowledge that we'll turn it over to you at this time and then board reminding you that there will be an executive session tonight.
Thank you, Board President Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, we have two reports and I'm going to turn them immediately over to the presenters. The first report will be by Deputy Superintendent Brian Laba on the COVID recovery and back to school, COVID testing and updates. Right?
All right. Thank you for the opportunity again tonight to share. Thank you, Board President and Board members, for the opportunity to talk about this academic school year thus far. So I'm in the agenda tonight. We're just do a quick update on vaccines, what it means to keep students and staff out of school or at work, virtual school update. A little update on visitors and volunteers and a reminder about masks. And you have an opportunity at the end to ask any questions. We have been monitoring staff vaccination as required by the state governor. On Monday, October fourth is the deadline for the last vaccine to be fully vaccinated by the October eighteenth deadline. That is the Johnson Johnson vaccine, which is one shot, one and done. Currently, we're roughly around sixty-one percent of knowing all vaccination status of our staff. We're going to do another round this week of collecting that data by sharing the list of people we haven't confirmed yet with our administrators. And then they'll collect that data and get it back to us by the end of the week on Friday. We did broadcast widely the vaccination mandate for October eighteenth through emails, letters, news briefs, and staff presentations. We also held vaccination clinics both here at SSC and at Lakes during the month of September to help vaccinate any eligible students and staff as well. Staff who are approved from exemptions, who have approved exemptions from H R must test weekly, submit daily wellness at the stations and wear a K N ninety-five mask at all times while on campus or work. And we've been getting those exemptions handled as they come in through the H R department. Just a little different, I wanted to make sure we're clear on isolation and quarantine. Isolation is when we know the individual has COVID or has COVID-like symptoms. Typically, that isolation period is ten days from this, when the symptoms have started. Quarantine is when you have been exposed to somebody who's tested positive or has started symptoms. And there, the quarantine period is typically fourteen days. Since May, we've had a COVID response coordinator who works with schools and departments to manage isolation periods for positive individuals and quarantine periods for those who are exposed to positive cases. Due to the increasing volume, we're also adding a specialist to help assist with contact tracing and reporting to local health department and the State Department of Health. The coordinator has also collected and recorded vaccination status of employees and contractors as well as staff exemption status.
Do you have a question?
I do. I don't know, Brian, if you want me to save them. On the quarantine and isolation cases, I'm thinking of our students and the protocols for them regarding, you know, will they obviously, obviously, if you miss ten days of school this year, that's not even, that can't even be an issue. Wish it was, but the other thing on on receiving homework, I mean, receiving classwork, are the parents able to pick that up on a daily basis? How do they, parents, keep the kids on track? The reason why I'm asking, even my own grandson had symptoms of cold and just a cold, but still stayed home until it was proved that it wasn't COVID and then needed to get paid, we needed to get to school work and that was a little slow in coming. So do the schools have a protocol for making sure parents have access to student, the work that students are supposed to be doing? What does that look like for our kids?
Yeah, I have that in a couple of slides here.
Okay.
So I'll get to that one. And quarantine is a little bit different and that's in a different slide that we're moving to. Just a reminder about who qualifies as a close, who isn't essentially a close contact. So in a quarantine period, we, for the quarantine individuals, we've got to look at their contact with that positive individual. So fully vaccinated staff and students are not considered close contacts. So they can continue to come to school or work and don't have to quarantine. Now, the reminder there for social distances, staff have to remain six feet away from anyone to be considered not a close contact. And then students are only three feet away from each other. And then if they maintain three feet or more, they're not considered a close contact. And additionally, they're not considered a close contact if they're three feet or more and they've been wearing their mask right the full time. So anytime that they break that barrier and have their mask off, then they become a close contact. So that happens often at lunch, on the bus, and on the playground. As you break that three-foot distance, often you might, obviously, when you're eating, you don't have your mask on and you can't maintain three feet distance on the school buses. We did work with Health Commons Project. It's a nonprofit organization that works with Department of Health to modify our quarantine program. And what we have done is said, we have a seven-day quarantine. So when we recognize you as a close contact, we say you come and get tested at our centralized testing center at the Harry Elang Stadium Testing Booth. On the fifth or sixth day, as long as you have no symptoms, then you can return on the seventh day of quarantine. So that basically is halved the quarantine period down for individuals. We then worked with Health Commons Project to come up with a company that will do that testing for us. That's Premier Medical Group. And they then do the testing four days a week for four hours per day at the testing center. And this is open to both students and staff who are asked by the COVID response coordinator to quarantine. We are in the process of developing a test-to-stay program. We've had some preliminary conversations with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. But we need to work on our plan a little bit more in order to get final improvement from Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. Under this program, students and/or staff who are exposed at school or work would not have to quarantine from school or work, rather they would have to participate in additional testing in order to continue to report to the building under this type of plan. So under our test-to-stay program, the testing would have to take place at the school sites. We wouldn't be using our centralized testing center. Now, we've been trying to make it clear to both staff and students, really try not to come to school if you're not feeling well or you're sick. Really, that's really when we have greatest levels of exposure. We keep advertising, promoting the wearing of masks, right, at all times, making seat charts, seating charts when you're in the classroom by the staff and staying up to date on your attendance, making sure students, again, in the classroom are three feet apart, that they're wearing their cloth mask at all times. That when they go out of the classroom, they increase that social distancing in hallways and restrooms and cafeterias, right, you want to get as farther away when you're taking your mask off, let's say, in the cafeteria to eat, minimize that sharing of classroom materials and equipment. And then making sure anything that is shared is cleaned or sanitized between classes or between individuals. Our virtual school right now is just under six hundred students. There's about roughly at any given time, two hundred and fifty students in our Pearson Connectus virtual platform. We have one hundred and seventy-five students in middle school and Graduation Alliance's platform and one hundred and sixty-one students in the same platform in high school. Also part of our virtual program, we are serving special ed students, ranging from students in resource to students in life skills. Services will be delivered in part by Pearson or Graduation Alliance for our resource students in combination with our school-based resource teachers. Services for our life skills and F A F T students, functional academics or functional transition students will be delivered from our school-based staff for both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And some of our related services like occupational therapy or physical therapy, speech-language services are delivered via teletherapy or in person on-site depending on the student and family. This is also a I U P based decision. In our Pearson virtual model for our K five students, we do, we did purchase a live tutor program for them as well. So in addition to the time that they have synchronous with the teacher in that platform, though, most of the time in that platform, it's asynchronous. We did purchase Live Tutor for them to get additional assistance outside of the school day. That's a twenty-four-seven program, just like the program we purchased last spring called Paper. That all of our secondary students have access to. That's grade six through twelve. Doesn't matter if you're in the virtual program or in the in-person program. Everybody has access to Paper. We did do some additional professional development in August with staff on the use of Paper. And then we're going to continue to provide that as ongoing training as needed for our staff. So this gets to Carol's question. Really, we're asking our classroom teachers to keep their Microsoft Teams up to date. So they upload and maintain daily classwork and activities, homework, lesson plans, instructional materials. We're looking for all of that to be maintained in Teams. One for just what Carol was pointing out, anybody who's quarantined or sick, needing access to classwork, this is the quickest and easy way for staff to get that to families. Also, should we have to quarantine a whole classroom or quarantine a whole school? This is the quickest way back to synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And it's seamless, right, in that regard. So we're asking that they continue to do that, keep promoting that, and making sure the families look to Microsoft Teams, the classroom, which is in elementary, it's like six or six in middle school and eight or nine in high school. The students have their district provided laptops in the classroom that can get onto the district Wi-Fi. Students are currently taking their technology back and forth between school and home. They can use that at home to do homework or additional classwork or cleanup assignments. But then in the classroom, they can also use it to do assigned work from the teachers, small construction. Obviously, we'll use it for our state and district assessments as well. We are taking visitors, you know, for short periods of time into our buildings, like those check into the front office. Eventually, they'll do that through a system called Raptor. We're in the process of finalizing the details on the new automated system, where there'll be kiosks in every school. We're just working out the technology side of that. We have all the equipment, but what it takes to get that all onto the network. Visitors, of course, wear a mask at all times while at school. We've been minimizing the number of volunteers in the building. We're expecting schools that need to use volunteers to check with their council-level administrator. That person, the council-level administrator, would approve the use of volunteers. We are also moving clearance of volunteers through a Raptor, which is a visitor and visitor and volunteering management system. We'll initially roll that out web-based and then eventually we'll have those kiosks, like I said before, in all of our schools. But we're just getting through the parts of that. Really, we wanted to make sure that everyone is safe. And as you know, after October eighteenth, any volunteer in the building will have to prove their vaccination status, right? So that vaccination status is not just for staff. It's also for any volunteers or contractors that we have working in the buildings. They have to show proof of vaccination status or attest to that through their companies.
You go ahead.
So will this be shared? Because like, you know, we do hear that people are, you know, they want to go into the schools, they want to help in the classroom. So will this be shared to our community through through Ron's messaging, through school messaging? How will this information get out as to, especially the requirement of the vaccinations and how will parents be told how they can participate in their kids' school?
Once we're in a position where we can open the doors to volunteers and it wouldn't be adding an additional potential exposure into the school footprint, then we'll definitely communicate on multiple levels. Yes, there will be a district messaging, but there will also be individual school messaging.
And also within the Raptor system, there will be a notification that's, one of the steps is making sure you verify your vaccination.
So are we looking toward like more like the end of October? Because this says October.
I, so, yes, we were looking at October and we were looking at a lot of things for September. And then we had a steep rise in COVID cases. And so we're really going to let the data tell us when it's appropriate and the data combined with guidance from Tacoma Pierce County Health.
You know, I appreciate that. And I'm really concerned, you know, secondary students can have their vaccination, our elementary kids cannot. I think that they're kind of the most vulnerable because of that. So I appreciate the caution and 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 really, yeah, I'm glad to hear that it's it's not yet, because if it's not ready, it's not ready.
Right. Well, it's, one, the system, we're getting the system set up. And then, two, it's really about, like Ron said, minimizing the footprint, right? So making sure, and then really kind of wait until October eighteenth, when we know everyone's meeting the governor's announcement for vaccination status.
Yeah.
So then. It sounds like a lot of this procedures that we're following, you're saying towards the right. I mean, they, they look great. They really do. It's not where we want to be, but it's a safe place to be. But they're also completely in alignment with Department of Health, Pierce County. I want to remind people that we're not just coming up with things that we think are the best. We're following what our state, the governor and the Department of Health are asking us to do.
Yeah, the most recent Department of Health guidance for K twelve schools was published on August tenth, and that's what we've been following. And then after that, the governor also then announced the statewide indoor masking mandate as of August twenty-third, right? So we've been maintaining wearing masks while we're in school buildings, right? Students wear their masks and then staff wear either the three-ply surgical mask or K N ninety-five mask. And then some of our staff were in some what we consider high-risk categories. In addition to K N ninety-five, they wear a face shield and may or may not need to wear gloves and gowns. It's sort of depending on what their job duties are. There's administrative notice around that, which was connected to some guides from Department of Labor in the industry as well as Department of Health. And then we do say, you know, masks are highly recommended outdoors, right, in large groups when you cannot maintain social distance, right? So any additional questions?
I have a question. And I see that the current percentage of staff who are vaccinated is only sixty-one percent. And I know that the two-dose vaccine ship sales. So now we're on the Johnson and Johnson. What, how many exemptions were applied? Like, what's the total number at between the vaccinated staff and those who were received approved exemptions?
So Laura, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the number of exemptions, whether medical or religious, that have been approved is about eighty-five.
Okay. And was there any type of like survey that went around that like asked staff if they had, were planning up, so for your, I'm only asking, this is, I just applies to my job as well. It's very stressful, trying to figure out who's going to be here on October eighteenth and who isn't, and it's being one hundred percent outside of your control. But do we have an idea of how many teachers are in staff or just?
What we've done is we've communicated constantly and consistently from the time the announcement was made. So each week, staff get, you know, just prior to the Moderna cutoff, they got an announcement, hey, this Monday, you would have to, if you're going to take the Moderna here. And prior to that, it was the Pfizer. So we're constantly communicating through multiple venues that this is happening, kind of giving a little bit of the background, just to ensure that they understand it is a governor's mandate. And so it is, we're experiencing the same thing you're experiencing in terms of sixty-one percent. So again, we constantly look at who's turning those in and who's turning in exemptions. We don't know if we're going to get a bunch of exemption requests between now and the eighteenth. And again, Monday, the fourth is the last day. So we're monitoring. And yes, we consistently put out information and reminders through multiple venues, whether that's an all-staff email or Monday news briefs. I will hit on it. I mean, I'm not doing videos every week, but when I do a video, I do a reminder.
And just a reminder too, this is a percentage of all staff. So this is all classified. Bus drivers, food service workers, mechanics, certificated teachers, office staff, S S C. Right, you're talking the the whole, getting this vaccination status from the entire employee groups that we have in the district. So we're making another push this week. We're giving every principal their list of people who haven't shared that with us. And we'll collect that on Friday and be able to update our spreadsheets. And then we'll also collect, make sure we have it every, everyone here at SSC as well as the Auxiliary Services Center where Transportation, Nutrition and Maintenance and Operations are located.
So those will be more intimate, one-to-one reminders that are coming up on this date.
So our schools, is this a school issue or a district issue? I believe it's both, but our, the worst-case scenario, we don't have enough staff. Are they coming up with a plan on what to do? Well?
I've heard everything from the government may extend it to, you know, so at this point, we're, we're waiting to see who does.
I mean, I think it's part of everyone, so it's a mandate is in the same position ever.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Oh, it's not just schools.
I meet with Pierce County Superintendents collectively every Thursday morning. And everything that we're experiencing, every district is experiencing, and like you just said, other industries are experiencing as well that are under the mandate.
Okay, well, that was my question.
We appreciate the information and I know that, again, it's difficult. We have mandates, we have requirements, we have to map them out for our everyday practices in school and be compliant. So thank you, Superintendent Banner, to your team and the hard work that you're doing. I'm also appreciative of our teachers and staff that are following through, reading their vaccinations and doing their part as well.
So next, we had some comments at the September thirteenth board meeting. And I wanted to provide some clarity to to some of the concerns. And it's just, it's interesting. And I've said this before, we have to live within the parameters set by multiple agencies. The Center for Disease Control, Labor Industries, the Department of Health, Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, as well as the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And some of these agencies are, they interpret the federal level. And then the Pierce County interprets the state level. And so there's delays, there's different interpretations. And so as we, as we then work, it's within the guidance that's ultimately delivered to us. And so again, some clarity around some of the comments that were made about lunchtime and playground and playground equipment and bus seating. And so I will ask Executive Director Megan Eakin, as well as Assistant Superintendent Rick Reed, to weigh in on the, on the clarifications. And I believe, Brian, you were going to run the PowerPoint for them.
All right. Thank you, Board Directors and Superintendent Banner. I'm excited to be here to talk all things elementary. Brian, go ahead. Next slide. So we're going to touch on student nutrition, playgrounds, and transportation. So each school has a designated time for recess at our elementary schools. And we understand and know that it's really important to give students time to be outside, to socialize, to get fresh air. Beginning September twentieth, schools began phasing in playground equipment for students to use. And as of today, all of our elementary schools have at least one playground structure that's open for use. And we, we are really appreciative of our Maintenance and Operations Department for making this happen. So students who choose to use the playground equipment, we're asking, we're telling that they must wear a mask and maintain three feet of social distance of others. However, students at recess, if they're able to maintain six feet of social distance, they can remove the mask. So that happens oftentimes when students choose to walk on the track or be around other peers in an open field. And it's also important to know that students are, they're given mask breaks, so they get a break during lunch and breakfast. And also another one in the afternoon. And then if students need that mask break, they're more than welcome to ask their teacher and that will be provided. And on the playground, students are organized in zones where they play and they're, they're zoned with students from their own homeroom classroom. Next slide, please, Brian. Breakfast and lunch. It looks different at each school site. Most of our students are eating meals in the classroom. Although some students or some buildings are able to utilize their cafeteria space, it really depends on the size of the building and whether the cafeteria and gym are a shared space or not. Brian talked about this earlier, just limiting the amount of unmasked time during lunch to decrease possible exposure. So all students will have enough time to finish their meals. And if a student needs more time, the school will accommodate that and we have plans to do that. But again, we're really working to limit that time that students are unmasked altogether in a classroom. I'm going to pass it on to Rick.
Right. Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Board. So on transportation, we're following pretty much the same protocols that we followed when we went back into the hybrid model. We are also in alignment with Washington Department of Health supplemental considerations to mitigate COVID nineteen transmission in K twelve schools as outlined in September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one and D O H eight twenty dash two eighteen bulletin. So what I'm talking about here is is same stuff that you can find in that, those guidelines. So when a student enters our bus, they see visible signage about, about the need public transportation, because we are a public trans, under federal guidelines for public transportation. It is required that everyone that gets on a bus wear a mask, no different than if you got on a public bus, such as sound transit. Drivers and students are required to wear face masks. If if a student gets on the bus and doesn't have one, we do have extra masks and we provide those for the students when needed. So next slide, Brian. We have assigned seats to all of our students. In doing that, we are improving our opportunity to, to do any type of contact tracing in an event that there is an exposure. Students are seated with household members or other kids from their normal classroom cohorts as well. Buses operate on their regular public schedules, so they don't go around and pick up other kids that weren't on their normal buses. We use a system called Z Pass where the students swipe a card. It, it registers, they got on the bus and it registers when they get, that they got off the bus. So we could also determine who was on the bus on any given day. Um, so we could also determine who was on the bus on any given day. Next slide. Um, ventilation, we try and ma- maximize the ventilation as much as possible. Um, as the, uh, individual stated it, at the board, last board meeting. Um, kids do get into buses and they're fairly loaded, heavily loaded, um, similar to if you get it on an airplane or get on a city bus. So what we do is we, we utilize the windows and the roof vents. All of our buses have a front, uh, roof hatch and a rear roof hatch. So, uh, and they're designed to force air in through the front of the bus and force it out, um, which is, is helpful in maximizing that air. And then we do keep the bus windows down whenever it's safe to do so. Um, we also clean high-touch areas, including the tops and backs of seats, uh, at the end of morning and afternoon routes. We also encourage p- um, parents to transport students and allow students to walk or ride their bu- bikes to school. And we have encouraged, um, students to wash and sanitize hands whenever they leave their home or classroom prior to getting on the bus. Next slide. And at this point, um, if there's any questions?
I, I don't have a question. I have more of a comment based off the comments from last week. Sometimes the rules logically are like, oh, why is it that, well, you know, in the classroom it's this way and in the bus it's this way. I think it's important to remember that we're trying to be as safe as possible while still following the laws of you have to get the kids to school. How do you get the kids to school? They have to provide the bus. It's, so it's not that we don't realize that kids are sitting next to each other on the bus and then going into the classroom. If you don't have the funds to run additional buses and spreading everyone out, it's not possible. We can't ask parents to drive their kids to school. It's unfortunate. We're, I think it's just important to remember that we're doing the best that we can with the guidelines that we're required to follow and with the funds that we have.
And not, and not only funds, but personnel.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it's, it's very difficult right now, just to have healthy people being able to work and do some of the things that we want.
Yeah, and I think all of our question was transportation when COVID first hit, remember? We were trying to get kids back into the classroom. And we said, that was one of the first things that we said, okay, well, we can open up schools, but then we have to put everyone on the bus. And then at the end of the day, it was decided being in person was the best option, but we still have to get the kids to school.
Yeah, we actually have the same questions as a staff when, when, when this first started and the guidelines started coming out. Um, we had the exact same question. Why is it that we could put kids on a bus right by each other, but not, you know, in a classroom? And then that went from six feet to three feet. And you heard Brian and Rick give dates on some of the documents. The reason they give those dates, because those documents have shifted over time, right? They're adding or deleting portions of them from those agencies. Um, and so again, those are the parameters that we have. It, uh, sometimes feels like the best, worst deal. And I would reiterate President Schaefer in that we have a significant amount of money from our federal ESER grants. There are no people to fill positions. And, and that's again, one of those things that all of the schools in Pierce County. And when I meet monthly in our regional superintendent meetings, this is not a Culver Park, it's not a Pierce County, it's not, uh, just this area. It's not even just a Washington thing. We have some states that have enacted the National Guard to drive buses. Um, I think this was Vermont, Massachusetts, it was an East Coast state, uh, where they enacted the National Guard to come in and support a district by driving buses because of the low numbers of people. This is not a money issue. This is a personnel issue. Cannot fill the positions. We post them. We have the money for them. People are not filling them, so.
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and then also just the last thing that I have written down was just because one, you know, transportation does make a lot, you know, a lot of sense that they can sit next to each other and go in the classroom. It doesn't mean you do away with all protocols. Because, you know, you're doing the best you can in one area. That doesn't mean, okay, well, that's, let's just do away with them all.
You know, I also want to give kudos to you and your staff, Ron, in that we started looking at school schedules last year.
Yes.
You know, if Seattle's still running some kids an hour or two behind and, and there's still our major problems, right? The fact that we looked at, you know, you, your team looked at what's the worst-case scenario, let's do this to avoid that. I think you did a great job, and I know there was a little bit of unrest, because there always is when you change a schedule like that. But by the very fact that we're getting kids to school in a timely manner with the personnel that we have is, is a huge accomplishment for, for a larger district like ours. Not an easy decision, but it was done well.
Any other questions for the team?
I'm excited the playgrounds are back open, I have to say. Even though they make me nervous, I still take my sons to playgrounds because I feel like the one limer of hope. So, I don't know, it will be fun.
That was actually, um, so I have to say this because the evening of the board meeting, when we had the concern about the playground equipment, literally about four PM that day, and I hadn't seen the email until the next day. OSPI put out a new, uh, guidance that you could start opening playground equipment. Uh, but again, you see the timing. It's not gonna work for anyone, really. But that concern was there. And so then Rick and his team moved to start inspecting playground equipment that hadn't been used in over a year and a half, so to make sure it's safe, et cetera. Uh, but that's the timing that we talked about. We never know when a change is going to come. But we're ready to get it, analyze it, and then look at the safest way to implement it.
Well, Marty, you might have, I know with my grads, the reality is they don't complain about wearing masks, they don't complain about eating it in their classroom. They don't complain about the distance. All they want to do is play a little bit. So if, if, if you've done that, then you're good. And I've heard gravy, I'll-
Well, and just one other thing on the topic, because I've seen some confusion of like, who's responsible for doing, uh, opening the playgrounds and doing all of these things? Of course, anyone can come to the board and, you know, express a concern or complaint. But I think that it's important for the public to realize that the board does not open playgrounds. The board does not determine transportation routes, how many kids are on the bus. That, you know, that falls under you and your team. So of course, everyone can come and express concerns. It's great to hear the concerns and see what's going on. But I do think it's really important to remember, you know, that we don't run the day-to-day operations of the-
And even in those areas, a lot of the requirements are made at a state federal level.
Yeah.
Where we're working out and mapping compliance. And so it is, uh, it's difficult because a lot of us would like to have things one-off for the way that we want them. But just right now, that's not the option. And I also want to appreciate the, uh, effort that we've gone to, to open up the playgrounds. Anything we open up in a safe manner is very well received by our community, so thank you. Further questions or comments, Board? Superintendent, any other closing comments on your reports?
No, those, that concludes our report.
Well, we're now at a place where we're going to be able to have our reports from the board. And so, uh, one of the areas that we wanted to make sure we finished, um, doing so that we could sign our, uh, most recent standard operating procedures, uh, was revised version. I know that there were kind of, it was just a huge report out.
Yep, so Anthony and I were the subcommittee of the SOPs. And we took the comments that, uh, we had and went through them and made some recommendations for a few changes. Um, there, there's just a few in here, so I guess I could mention them. Um, one was, uh, bringing clarity on what, uh, bringing up something unexpectedly meant. So we thought having a, um, time of when change requests for the meeting, uh, sorry, a time for the deadline to submit changes, uh, change requests. So we put that the Friday for a meeting by two PM. Uh, that would give Ron enough time, um, to look into it, you know, before the week, very short amount of time. So I apologize, but also Monday leading up to the meeting, but you know, we were trying to be fair. Some things were coming in on Monday and it was really not enough time at all. So we thought, okay, Friday by two PM, at least you can see it before the end of the day, maybe you can address it on Monday. Um, you know, except something along those lines. And then we put the definition of grandstanding in there. Um, just because it didn't seem like there was a lot of clarity of what that really meant. So we just said, let's be literal and let's put the definition right on that. Um, and then we also added that there, for the board director request, we put that there must be a voice of three for a request to move forward. There seemed to be confusion lately over my request was not answered, I didn't get, uh, you know, the staff didn't do this, or you know, whatever it may have been. This is just a good reminder that nothing moves forward without a voice of three. For communication, for the second bullet, uh, uh, we added, it's far easier to communicate praise and criticism towards board directors and the superintendent. Because it's remember, it's a good reminder that that is what that bullet point was all about, was not criticism towards the staff or whoever else it may be. Um, it was really for the board and the superintendent. And those were the-
Earl, do you have any comments on the SOPs with your thoughts?
Um, you know what? These are pretty precise, the concise, concise, and, um, pretty well spelled out. I hope that we, are we planning on signing them in October, at the October meeting, I hope? And you know what? I also wanted to make one comment on the changes submitted to Friday before the meeting. But the other value of doing that is I know that the agenda goes out to the buildings, to principals. So this is also, it's publicized and if we're changing them at last minute, people aren't notified of what's actually going on at board meetings. So I think we owe that to our community that this is set and it's not a, there's no smoking, you know, it just appears, it's clean and concise. And I, I appreciate that. I think it's appropriate.
And I just wanted, I just, there's a comment about this, I just wanted to make it clear that Anthony and I did at length go over the decision-making process. And we, as the subcommittee, we felt that given the, why that was in there, what it was actually calling for, the decision-making for you and your team of how, you know, make decisions as a whole, that followed the guidelines. So we didn't see the need to make any changes on the decision-making process. But that was, that's just our recommendation as the subcommittee.
Thank you so much for your work. I know, um, the additions you went through, something else, we had an opportunity to speak, uh, opportunity tonight as well. And so, uh, I look forward to having a smooth, efficient October. Normally we've done it in September, so we're a little bit, you know, revise things. We've got other things on our plate, so I appreciate that. I'd like to now go to the board report on public comment protocol. It's been interesting. Uh, for me, we've often used, of course, Robic's rules of order for the overall, uh, way of how we board meetings and protocol. Of course, when we have specific policies and the procedures we have in place, those are, uh, specifically aligned to our school district and those state personnel as well. But lately, because of the hybrid models and the virtual requirements made by the governor, even have virtual meetings. And right now, we're required to have virtual meetings. It's, while the members are allowing it, we can have this hybrid opportunity. Even then, as you see, there's a lot of activities, protocol that we have to follow. All that being said, we recognize that our current, um, protocol was pre-COVID. And so it's not dated correctly. We need to revisit it. And so what I'd like to do is to do another subcommittee and, uh, have two people go through the protocol, make sure that it's up to date currently. And so I'm looking for, uh, two people to be on that subcommittee, because you two are here tonight. Would you, would you two be willing to volunteer?
Sure, yeah. I think it is important. It's a good idea, because I think that there's been some confusion where what we may think like, oh, yeah, but I mean, yeah. So I just think if we can get it, I think we'll be here for a while, virtual and in, uh, in person. And I just think that we can make it super clear, so everyone's on the same page.
And in this case, uh, just asking you two, the sooner would be better.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because, you know, right now, you know, we're just, we're doing the best we can, but we're required. You know, you can go back to our last meeting and it's so understandable that an individual did not want to wear a mask. I stated their reasons and you wanna, you wanna work with people. And so we have protocol that we're supposed to allow us, you know, the understanding at times when we can make provisions for them. So there's so many of these things that we normally wouldn't have to face, but right now we are facing them, so the sooner we do it, the better.
Yeah.
And by the very fact that we now have thirty, forty, up to seventy people watching our meetings. And if they want to make comment, I think we need to make that available. Look, we've never had to worry about how to get their comments and how to get input. Now this is an opportunity for us to do it, so.
Yeah, and it's, you know, we can see how other place, other-
Districts.
Districts are doing it and just, yeah, so.
Good, good to it.
We've been following some of the protocols from WASDA. And so I encourage you to, to take advantage of those, you know, that those embedded and are legal as well. All right, thank you very much for that.
Would you like us to review those by next workshop?
Yeah, it'd be wonderful by the next workshop.
Okay.
Very similar to what we did tonight. Here's what, here's our first passers what we're thinking.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Right, which is, and it is something we'll be presenting. It's obviously nothing that we'll be voting on. Um, I'm assuming that's just-
We may be able to vote it, vote on it, just that we're all in agreement.
Okay, okay, that we all agree, okay.
That, you know, the, it often comes down to the power of, uh, our alignment to our initiatives. And so when you do have a vote, a one voice, there's often an advantage of that. It helps, helps everybody to be on the same page.
Right.
And it helps also the district understand, you, you, you're gonna need to know the way we do protocol, the way that Congress tries to set things up. Information gets sent out, and so, all right. Any other thoughts on that? Well, thank you both for being willing to do that. I, uh, acknowledge that we have one director on vacation. I believe Paul was, uh, in Canada, had to actually admit, he'd said they were just going to, I think that's why he's not here tonight. And so anyway, uh, they're not here. You guys are, you've been very trying to take the responsibility here. I also want to, uh, move to the opportunity that we have in naming of the Culver Park School District, I mean, the Culver Park High School gym after Coach Mello Minnis. And then there's also been a suggestion about the baseball field being named for Coach, uh, Earl Hagmo. Yeah. We know that these, uh, requests are not a one-off. Or are there several people that they have acknowledged the significance and contributions of these individuals? And so I just want to make sure we're aware of that and do the best we can.
So are we looking for some forward action? Um.
So again, just it's been, it's always been our protocol, now it's written in the SOPs. But we have the voice of three, we're moving, we're looking at actually, uh, changing or creating a name for the gym at Culver Park High School.
Right.
So it'll be called the gym and keep calling, you know?
Because we do have policy on naming things. And Alyssa and I just, we, we worked on, on the policy. We do have a policy on that. And I feel like, you know, it's kind of the fact that we just-
Did we?
It was for a facility.
It was a procedure, right?
It was a procedure, but we still, you know, we changed, remember, we, we changed some things of, of timing and, and things like that. And, um, I do think it would be good, maybe, I don't know if we need to set up a subcommittee again and, um, for the, well, how do we move this forward?
I think there's-
Isn't it the-
How do we do it?
So if the board was just to move it forward and investigate, have, have us look at this, then the board would give me direction. And then I would follow the procedures, uh, as long as we're moving, yeah.
And should they be done separately as opposed?
Yeah.
I, I, it seems to me like you've got two individuals here, uh, because of the fact of the pause, I know the policy about naming. And we have to make sure, should they, I think they should be done, looked at individually. And we have to make sure, should they, I think they should be done, looked at individually and what the contributions have been. And um, following the policies that we have.
Yeah, and I'm, I'll say this because I've said it in the past and I still believe it. There's a lot of emotion when someone passes away. Obviously, in this case, it is, I, you know, even as an outsider, I did not know him personally, Coach Minnis. But I know the outpouring that he has, and I know this isn't a one-off request. I know multiple people have said it. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I guess it's fully vetted. You know, the emotion, there's always gonna be emotion, but you know, try to take it out a little bit, um, just to make the emotion.
Okay, or try to take it out?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear the word take. I believe that on our maps.
And that was one of the reasons why we didn't put the time.
Right.
With it in, which I had originally, it was me, I was the make, I will take responsibility for that. That I had suggested putting a timeframe in after someone passed away because sometimes things came out or emotions, you know, shifted or changed. And it was actually decided as, as the board that to not go with that one because naming opportunities don't happen very often. And this may very well be one of those times. And so I just want to mention that because I was very outspoken about it before, so I just wanted to address it here now.
Well, and I just think this is a, to me, this is a really good example of how we look at a policy about what needs to be done and how it needs to be addressed. And I thought, isn't that interesting that we, we did look at it a little bit more globally instead of specific? I thought that was good. I'm just gonna say, I would like to say that if possible, you know, we do have basketball season coming up. And I think it would be, um, if we're gonna move this forward, to move this forward to maybe have that participate and, and, and um, with the season, if you will.
Yeah, it's interesting. There's, there's always two things that take place when we as a board are working on either policies or procedures. One is that we do things that are sustainable, that they're systemic, you want to be careful, uh, that they can handle a one-off, but also that they're not you know, too flippant either. So you, you want it to be a solid practice. So the mechanical part is significant. The other part is the heart aspect of it. And so here we do have an individual that genuinely gave his full heart, life and career. And I appreciate what you're saying. It's almost like in this particular case, there's a, a genuine momentum that's right versus rushing in and having problems later. So I acknowledge that if we could ask the Superintendent Ron to review it, look at it and see if there is a way that we can move forward in a sustainable, but expeditional manner we could take. And so I'm just, I'm seeing that we're all acknowledging that piece. So we'd like to hear a written report back from you as to what you think, you know, the best process would be. You good with that?
Yeah.
Then we have our upcoming Equity Professional Development with the board. And I was appreciative that we've been moving the equity journey forward. We called it a journey of purpose here for the fact that we knew that you don't arrive at equity, you build equity. And you continue to plant into it, make sure that you grow as it evolves and impacts our seats in our community. And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we also have an opportunity to do is we as a board get to participate in the aspects of the equity training. Yeah, our Clover Park School District staff have been able to participate in, so that we can get professional development around equity. So I'd like for us to be able to even give a specific type of that in our next workshop. And so I'm going to be working with superintendent, uh, to be able to build something that could be meaningful, uh, to bring us up to speed on some of the highlights of what equity is now moving towards in our district. So if I have agreement on that, we'd like to move that forward as well.
So our training kind of mirrors some of the training that our staff has been receiving, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's, I love the fact that, you know, we're not asking our staff to do things that we don't know and understand and haven't been a part of also. I support that.
Are there any concerns towards that? Is there any other?
No, I'm just looking at the date. October is a wild time for childcare with, for me on Wednesdays.
And we don't, we don't have to be like. We, I'm not locked into anything. I, I just appreciated the reality that we as a board have done very well in professional development on many areas. With WASDA, with NSBA, with different workshops. We've had some great workshops. We've had some great planning retreats, which, you know, I like the phrase, uh, an advance versus a retreat. But it's an area where we have intensive training. It's not, it's not a retreat at all. There's nothing about it that says retreat. But what we're doing is we're advancing the causes of the district by having intensive training. That's what we did. And so we, there's a lot of different formats that we could do it, but at least if we could do something in a workshop setting, perhaps even, we could move us towards having a better understanding of what we might want at an advance. Or it'd be great to, to be able to say, okay, now we've gotten this, so when we go to Washington, we want to be able to get more training in these areas. So that's all. All right. Superintendent, you know, we'll work on that a little bit and give information back to the board to get their insights on that. And then I wanted to give us an update on the community leadership team. We've had the new year's commander come forward, as you're aware, Superintendent Banner, myself, we're able to have a meeting with Colonel Abbott, asking his insight, how he might feel about being a part of the cell. And he was, uh, the word was excited. To be a part of it, very much believing in it, understanding the opportunities that we have to be collaborative, to be able to have our, our different communities come to the table, problems solved together was very exciting. So we're really looking forward to seeing that. We're continuing now to work with a cell team. And ultimately, the community life form as well. So I'll keep you guys posted. Are there any other follow-up or information? Any questions? Well, I do know that we have executive session. We have our, your program off executive session, I guess, really.
It would be great. I don't know that we'll take it off, but it'd be up there to set that.
So let's go ahead and, and let's just for executive session, we'll, we'll give it thirty minutes. I'll give you the opportunity to have a bio break as well. And we'll go ahead, break into executive, I mean, executive session for matters of legal discussion. And you will leave it set and be done. Thank you.
In the conference room. In the conference room?
Sixty. Okay. It is seven P M. We've just finished executive session. And I'm going to now see if there is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anybody care also? Alyssa, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, motion carries. We will adjourn now at seven oh one P M. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, community. Harmonious.